Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome to the January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty legislative meeting of the North Hills School District. The Board held a retreat on Saturday, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty at the Administrative Center. And we're going to begin this evening with Ms. Lisa Marcellus and the members of the cast of The Little Mermaid Jr. who have a very special performance for us.
Oh mistress of the deep, you've a visitor. I don't know now, no. My sinking cold fins. Don't be shy, Ariel darling.
Uh, I shouldn't be here. Mother died because of you.
Oh child, what happened to your mother? It was a terrible unfortunate accident. Poor soul.
An accident?
Of course, and I could very best to save her.
You did? But father told me-
The shrapnel said you shouldn't look so pityful at your father and he always sent me here and always misjudged the way you treat me.
He doesn't understand me.
Oh, but I do, Duncan. We're so very alike, you and I. Gals of ambition, now tell me, accident?
I'm in love with someone. A human.
A princess, I hear, quite a catch. The answer is simple, you've got to become human yourself.
Can you do that?
My dear sweet child, what I look for is how unfortunate a miracle would light yourself. Poor soul with no one else to turn to. I admit that in the past it's been nasty. And you're kidding when they call you a witch. But you'll find it nowadays. I've been in on my ways of perpetuity, polite and dangerous switch. True? Yes. And I've tortured you, oh, it's all magic. Does it happen that I always have possessed? In her lips, she saw that. I used on behalf of the miserable, lonely and pathetic, poor unfortunate soul in pain and need. This for wanting to be fair.
Yeah, I'm thinking of her.
Enjoy, I hope. Yes, indeed. Those poor unfortunate souls, so sad. Oh. Take a plug, you should like, cause you can't feel this.
Yes, I do.
Enjoy, I hope.
Yes, I do.
Now it's half the answer twice. So I'm gonna pay the price. I'm afraid I have a ring across the coals. It's like heavy on me. But a whole life goes south. To those poor unfortunate souls. I smell the train, it's too humid for three days. For the sunset on the third day, you've got to get your friends to kiss you. If you do, it's only for forever. And if I don't, you will turn back the time, mermaid, and your soul shall be lost. Life's still up to our choices. Isn't it? Well, of course, there's one more thing.
Not a thing. But I don't have any.
I'm not just in for much. All of yours.
If I give away my voice, how can I ever?
You have your looks, your pretty face. And I don't, I'm supposed to be a virgin, though. Body language. Come on, you poor unfortunate soul. Go ahead, be a new choice. I'm a very busy woman and I haven't got all day.
It won't cost much.
Just your voice. Poor unfortunate soul, it's sad. Oh. And if you want to cross the bridge, my sweet, you've got a daily goal. Take it, go, take it, perfect, go ahead, take your goal. Let some jets and now I've got her place, the boss is on the road. You poor unfortunate soul.
Thanks so much, would you guys introduce yourselves, please?
I'm Owen, I'm in seventh grade and I'm in.
I'm Ashley Campbell, I'm in seventh grade and I also play in.
I'm Zonia, and I'm in eighth grade and I play in.
I'm Hannah Reynolds, I'm in seventh grade and I play in.
Hi, I'm Rachel Paul, I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Grace Spelkroy, I'm in eighth grade and I play in.
I'm Noel Bowman, and I'm in eighth grade and I play in.
I'm Julia Martin, I'm in ninth grade and I play in.
Come see our show, January thirtieth, thirty first, and thirty first.
Tickets are available at mhfireanddrama.net.
We'd love to see you there.
Thank you guys very much, that was wonderful, we're all really excited to see the play. January is School Director Recognition Month in Pennsylvania, which is a time to spotlight the contributions of public school board members. So I would like to turn it over to Dr. Manorino for a presentation.
Thank you, Ally. As Tom Brokaw once said, "There is a place in America to take a stand. It's public education, and it's under the pinning of our culture and political system." It is the great common ground. Public education, after all, is the engine that moves us as a society toward a common destiny. It is in public education that the American dream begins to take shape. January is School Board Recognition Month in Pennsylvania, and I'd like to personally thank these community volunteers for their tireless dedication to public education and for taking a stand for the students of the North Hills School District. And on a personal note, I'd like to thank each of you for your support of me and this entire administrative team. Before we begin this presentation, we have a nice little video that's been put together about each of you, and you've seen some of the highlights of our school board members that have taken place on social media. And so, thank you to our school board, and as it says, it's a hundred and twenty-five years for Pennsylvania School Boards Association, and we're very proud to have the school board that we have here in the North Hills School District. At this time, I'd like to introduce our student representatives to the school board, Ally Fleischer and Hannah Shuley. Girls?
Hello, so as Dr. Manorino said, January is a School Director Recognition Month in Pennsylvania, a time to spotlight the contributions of public school board members. Communities throughout the Commonwealth will take this month to recognize school directors for their time and dedication to public schools. Those who serve as school directors are truly public service volunteers. They deal with taxation and funding issues, ensure that we have highly qualified administrators and teachers, and develop policies that support learning, safety, personnel, and finances. By taking the initiative to serve our community, members of the North Hills School Board have made a commitment to the long-term viability of Ross Township and Westview Bureau. These forward-thinking individuals are committed to ensuring public schools remain a solid foundation for the American democracy and serve as shiny examples for students to continue the excellent tradition of volunteerism, a hallmark of our society. We would like to thank the board members in a very special way. A book has been purchased for each school library in honor of a particular board member, and in the front of the book, there is a book plate dedicating the book in your honor. The books may have been chosen on a subject that is of particular interest to you, or it could be a book that a school's library really wanted to have. In addition, each board member will receive a piece of pottery created especially for you by our high school pottery students to thank you and for your support of the arts. So we're gonna go first today. So first, we would like to express our gratitude to Mr. Witherall for being a part of the district for over thirty years. He is a North Hills graduate, attended the University of Pittsburgh, and owns his own law firm right here in the North Hills. We would like to dedicate the book, Disney's Land: Walt Disney and the Invention of the Amusement Park That Changed the World, in your honor. This book is a propulsive story chronicling the conception and creation of Disneyland, the masterpiece California theme park as told like never before by historian Richard Snow.
Mr. Witherall is not only a lifelong resident of North Hills School District, but also loves to golf and is an avid fan, and lifelong fan of the Pittsburgh Steelers. We believe this book is fitting because Disneyland is known as a special and magical place, and Mr. Witherall has worked hard for many, many years to help make North Hills a magical, special place just like Disneyland. Through your hard work at North Hills, we truly believe that North Hills is a better place because of you.
Good evening, my name is Addison Winner and I'm a student at High Cliff. I am also the sixth grade Student Council Vice President. I'm honored to be here this evening to present the book Chicken Clicking by Jean Willis in honor of our school board member, Mr. Phil Little. While Mr. Little has just been elected to the North Hills School District Board of Education, he is no stranger to the district. Mr. Little currently works as a community government affairs liaison for the Pennsylvania Attorney General. In this role, Mr. Little has spent countless hours presenting to students throughout the district about their digital footprint, using technologies including social media appropriately, and developing good habits when going online. This is why we selected the book Chicken Clicking to be placed in the Library Media Center in honor of Mr. Little. In the story, Chicken Clicking, the main character Chick hops into the farmer's house one night and finds her way onto the computer. Quickly, Chick finds herself browsing the internet only to end up in a few precarious situations based on her decision-making. Just as Mr. Little has helped many students to understand how to navigate the internet in a safe way, we hope to use Chicken Clicking as a way to introduce our youngest students to safe searching and internet usage. This includes your oldest son who will join us next year at High Cliff as a kindergartner. Thank you, Mr. Little, for all of your hard work and generosity you have shown the students of North Hills through your job. We look forward to your service as a member of the Board of Education here in our district. On behalf of all of the High Cliff students, thank you very much for your time and service to the North Hills School District.
Good evening, North Hills School Board. My name is Grace Aiken and I attend McIntyre Elementary. Tonight, I'm presenting the book Scribblestones to Dr. Nulish for her effort and time at North Hills School District. Dr. Nulish has been a member of the Board of Education since December two thousand and thirteen. She has received her bachelor's, master's, and PhD from Carnegie Mellon University and works as a high education consultant. Dr. Nulish and her husband Kevin live in Ross Township and have one son, Andrew, who graduated from North Hills High School in two thousand and fifteen. During Andrew's time at North Hills, Dr. Nulish served as president of the North Hills Instrumental Parents Association. She enjoys music, reading, education, and needlework. Scribblestones, written by Diane Alber, is a book about how one rock had a dream and how his dream inspired others. Dr. Nulish has truly inspired others with her hard work and dedication. I believe that for every dark moment, there is bound to be a star. Dr. Nulish is truly a star to all of the North Hills staff. Thank you, Dr. Nulish, for your dedication to the North Hills School Board. Unfortunately, Dr. Nulish couldn't be here this evening because she is sick, so Mrs. Rieger will accept the book for her.
Good eve- good evening, my name is Isabella Aiken. Tonight, I'm here to present to Mrs. Spade. Mrs. Spade has lived in the district for forty-five years. And has been on the school board since two thousand and fifteen. Mrs. Spade was re-elected as school board vice president. For forty-nine years, she has worked on the north, with the North Hills Facilities Department, and continues to serve as a very active member of the Allegheny County Schools Health Insurance. The book that I'm presenting to Mrs. Spade is Never Let a Unicorn Scribble. Never Let a Unicorn Scribble is about a girl who believes scribbling is beautiful, despite the other people's negative opinions. The little girl patiently teaches her unicorn to scribble. Together, they make a picture and it is a masterpiece. Thank you, Miss Spade, for your perseverance, patience, and diligence in creating a masterpiece at North Hills.
Hello, my name is Shelby Ponyatowsky and I am an eighth grade student at the middle school. I am involved in Swimming, CrossFit, Volleyball Service Club, and I have been a dedicated member of the book club for two years. I am honored to be here tonight to dedicate a book for the middle school library in honor of my mom, Katie Ponyatowsky. My mom was elected to the North Hills School District Board of Education in November two thousand and nineteen, and she has been a member of the North Hills community for eleven years. She has worked in education for sixteen years and is currently a high school special education teacher. The book I've chosen for the middle school library in honor of my mom is Owning It: A Story About Teens With Disabilities. This book is a unique addition to our school library because it is a collection of ten short stories instead of being a full-length novel, and all of the stories were written by a well-known young adult authors. I have chosen this book because it is a book about teens navigating common parts of life, such as school, parents, and relationships. However, the teens in this book are going about their lives as young adults who also have physical and psychological special needs. My mom wants people to know how to help kids with disabilities and make them feel accepted, and I think this book will help kids do that. Thank you, and good luck, Mom, with the start of your term as a board member.
Hi, my name is Anna Belby Men and I am a fifth grade student at Ross Elementary. The book Dear Girl by Amy Kraus Rosenthal will be added to our school library in honor of Mrs. Sandra Kuzera. This picture book is written to girls by a female author who uses words to help girls feel better about themselves and find ways to love who they are just the way they are. The message of this book reminds girls that they are powerful, strong, and hold a valuable place in the world. My favorite line from this book is, "Dear girl, don't ever lose your sense of wonder." This book will be led by, will be read by lots of girls at Ross who will hopefully feel uplifted by its message and be encouraged to simply be themselves and feel that they can do anything. Mrs. Kuzera has two daughters that attend Ross, that attend Ross Elementary, like me. Her daughters Elena and Zoe bring joy to her life, and I know she will enjoy reading this book with her girls. I feel very lucky to have strong and passionate women like you, Mrs. Kuzera, to represent our district and make decisions that will help the students of our schools. I'm sure your daughters are very proud of you. Thank you, Mrs. Kuzera, for all that you do for the North Hills School District.
Hello, my name is Elena Williams.
And my name is Zoe Williams.
Our mother Sandra Kuzera has been a member of the school board for two years. Here's to a strong woman, may we know them, may we be them, may we raise them. Thank you, Mom, for being a strong woman and teaching us to be strong girls.
We love you and we are proud of you.
Hi, my name is Sydney Mathis and I am a fifth grade student at Ross Elementary. The book titled Because by the author Mo Willams will be added to our school library in honor of my mom, Ally Mathis. This book is a story about a girl who discovers her love for classical music. My brother Colter and I are both members of North Hills Bands, and my mom has been a great supporter of both of us in our musical careers. She is a big supporter of the marching band and the Ross Elementary Band that we both participate in. She believes that music is an important part of the education system and good for kids to learn. This book follows a girl who falls in love with music at a young age. She was inspired by famous classical musicians of the past, just like I am inspired by my mom, who took a chance and ran for school board because she believed in herself and our school system. The little girl in this book is changed by her experience with classical music and later becomes a conductor who conducts on the very stage she sees her first concert in. This reminds me of how our school district is being changed for the better by the work of people like my mom and the rest of the North Hills School Board members. I am so proud of the work my mom is doing and will continue to do for our district and its students.
Hi, my name's Colter Mathis and Ally Mathis is my mom. Thank you, Mom, for all you do for Sydney and me and for all of the students of the North Hills School District. You care about making the world a better place, and you are strong in your convictions about how to do your part. A strong woman accepts both compliments and criticism graciously, knowing that it takes both sun and rain for a flower to grow. I love you and I'm proud of you.
Hi, I'm Ally Rennebeck, and I am here to present Code Seven: Cracking the Code for an Epic Life by Brian R. Johnson, in honor of my mom, Rachel Rennebeck. This collection of short stories is about seven fifth grader, fifth grade kids at Flint Elementary School. They are all trying to navigate problems in and out of the classroom. And while each story stands on its own, they call, they all come together in a final chapter. Each student learns important lessons about a, about a variety of topics, including empathy, work ethic, and embracing change. My mom, Miss Rachel Rennebeck, taught me all about these important lessons by watching her. I have learned about working with other people, trying my best in cracking the code to reach epic life goals. This is my mom's first year on the school board, and I know she's going to do a great job. Thank you, Mom, for all your wonderful work you did.
Hello, my name is Raymond Rennebeck. My mom is Rachel Rennebeck. As the American journalist and sports writer Steve Rushin has said, "Moms are as relentless as the tides. They just don't drive us to practices, they drive us to greatness." Mom, you are always there to support us in everything we do, and now as a member of the school board, you work hard for all the students of the North Hills School District. We love you and we're proud of you.
Good evening, I am Jonathan Hasek, an eighth grade student at North Hills Middle School. At school, I play the cello and I am a member of the book club. I am one of the library's MVPs, or Most Valuable Patrons, as I spend a great deal of my home room time in the library getting many, checking out many new books to read. Tonight, I'm here to dedicate a book from the middle school library in honor of Deanne Philpott. Miss Philpott was elected in the North Hills School District Board of Education in November two thousand and nineteen. Her two sons, seven-year-old Miles and five-year-old Noah, attend first grade in kindergarten respectively at McIntyre Elementary. She graduated from North Hills and moved to the area, moved back to the area two years ago, so her children could attend her alma mater. Miss Philpott currently works as a school wellness consultant. The book we have chosen for the middle school library in dedication to Miss Philpott is called Growing Nutritious Food. In this book, a class works with their teacher to generate ideas about how they can make healthier eating choices for their, in their daily lives. Through this discussion, the class decides, sorry, decides to plant a vegetable garden in their school. As they make plans for the garden, the students research, consult with professionals in nutrition and gardening, and conduct an experiment to learn about selecting the best plants to grow and how to grow and how to care for them. This book will be of valuable addition to the middle school library for all students, but perhaps especially for the students in the middle school gardening club. Thank you, Miss Philpott, for, for, sorry, serving the students of the North Hills School District as a member of the Board of Directors, and we hope you enjoy this book.
Hello, my name is Miles Philpott. And I am in first, and I'm a first grader at McIntyre Elementary. This is my brother Noah. He's in kindergarten. Our mom, Deanne Philpott, is a new school board member and we are very proud of her. Thank you, Mom, for all that you do for us. We'll love you forever, we'll like you for always, as long as you live and our mother you'll be.
Good evening, my name is Sean Good and I am a student at High Cliff. I am also the fifth grade Student Council Vice President this year. I am honored to be here this evening to present the book, The Sweet Smell of Christmas, by Patricia Scary, in honor of school board member, Mrs. Kathy Reed. Mrs. Reed has been a part of the North Hills community for over forty-five years. All of her children graduated from North Hills, and now her two grandsons also go to North Hills. Mason is a seventh grader at the middle school, and Brady is a tenth grader at the Mason is a seventh grader at the middle school and Brady is a tenth grader at the high school. Mrs. Reed also served the district for many years prior to joining this Board of Education by serving as the district activities coordinator for nine years. Retiring, retiring in two thousand and seven, since two thousand and nine, Mrs. Reed has served as a school board member for North Hills. Mrs. Reed enjoys supporting our North Hills sports teams and extracurricular groups as well and can often be seen at these events cheering on the Indians. At High Cliff, we are fortunate enough to have Mrs. Reed's daughter, Mrs. Amy Metz, as one of our first grade teachers. Like all of us at High Cliff, Mrs. Metz is very proud of all of the great things Mrs. Reed has hoped to accomplish for our school district and for the support she has provided to herself and others throughout the years. One of the great things about books and stories that we share with another are the memories that we often attach to the books. This is no different from Mrs. Metz and Mrs. Reed. One of Mrs. Metz's favorite book-related memories growing up was reading The Sweet Smell of Christmas each holiday season. We are excited to add this great holiday story to the High Cliff library shelves so that the other North Hills families can create special memories with one another for many years to come. Thank you, Mrs. Reed, for all of your hard work and dedication that you have shown the students of the North Hills School District throughout your many years of service as our district's activities coordinator and as a member of the Board of Education. We are grateful for your time and energy and all you have done to support the students of the North Hills School District. On behalf of all High Cliff's students, thank you very much for your time and service to the North Hills School District. And thanks for Mrs. Metz too.
Hi, I'm Brady Metz and...
I'm Mason Metz.
And our grandmother is Kathy Reed. Grandmothers are special because you can always go to them when you need anything. When you need to talk to someone or you just need help. And my grandma is no exception. Thank you, Maga, I'm proud of you and everything you do for the district.
Thank you, Maga, for everything you do for us and for all of the students at North Hills School District. We are so proud of you.
Thank you to all the librarians who worked with these kids to put together such thoughtful speeches. On behalf of the board, we truly appreciate it. And, and thank you to Mrs. Rieger, who I know also helped with this special presentation. And I also want to thank our communications director, Heather Pellet, who I think has done a really nice job of highlighting the board members on social media this month. So, thank you on behalf of the board. Before we move on to board member comments this evening, I just wanted to recognize that we have or had a, one of our fellow government officials in the audience, um, who's not paying attention, but Steve Corable. Thanks for coming, President of the Ross Township Commissioners. Do we have any board member comments this evening? Do we have anybody who has signed up for public comments on agenda items only this evening? Okay, seeing that there is nobody, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. I'd like to make a motion that the board approve the minutes from the December thirteen, I'm sorry, the December third, twenty nineteen reorganization meeting and the December third, twenty nineteen committee meeting slash legislative meeting. Uh, any comment, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on education this evening, we have Mr. Steve Hosa, who will provide information on the high school gifted program project-based learning.
I'm not the one that cleared out the room. Okay, my name's Steve Hosa, I'm a gifted teacher, um, at the senior high. And tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing in gifted support at the senior highs, high school. Uh, this year's been a bit of a transition year for us, uh, both with, we have two new teachers in gifted support. And we're increasing our emphasis on project-based learning. It's been both, it's been really a challenging and rewarding experience and we really couldn't have been as successful as we are being without our buy-in and support of all our teachers across the curriculum. And we truly are fortunate to have such a wonderful staff at North Hills. Project-based learning is an instruction that encourages students to learn and apply knowledge and skills through an engaging experience. I didn't do the slideshow, this was Mr. Hand. So if you see my picture too much, blame him. Okay, the project-based learning, this is something that we have been doing in the past and we've had a lot of success with. However, this year, we've been trying to increase our focus on the project-based learning. And that's what I'm going to try to talk to you here about tonight. Instead of going into, um, tech- technical explanations of what we do, I'm going to try to give you some examples of the avenues we've pursued and try to talk, talk to you about it that way. So, we, we've done this a number of different ways. The first thing up here, you might wonder why this is the bathroom beautification projects, but throughout the districts, we, throughout the district and throughout the building, we have students give up their ti- gave up their time designing, creating murals in the restrooms to try to make the building, um, more attractive and more friendly place. Uh, this wasn't done by just gate students. This was done by students across the board. And the reason that I bring this up is because we don't just deal with gifted students when we're dealing with gate. We deal with high-achieving students and a number of other students in various capacities. And that really underlines one of the basic tenets of what we do. And that's we're trying to promote involvement across the curriculum and even outside of the curriculum in our students. And project-based learning can take place in a number of different ways and it's not just restricted to the gate students, although that is our primary focus. One of the things that we've done this year and one of the ways that we go about doing the project-based learning is we find a subject area that somebody is interested in and we try to teach the subject and use um, real-world examples or real-world problems and try to have the student come up with solutions. Now, in this slide up here, this is Duncan. Duncan's been a fantastic student, uh, throughout his time up here. He's very interested in, in economics. One of the things that we've done, an example of how we do this, is Duncan wasn't even able to take economics because his course load is too, too challenging. He can't fit everything in that he wants. But he does have time, so he gives up his study halls twice a week and he comes in and we discuss economics. One day is usually a lesson and then the next day, I will present a problem with him or a current event to try to talk about. Usually give him about a week to come up with a solution. Then we come in and discuss his solution. That usually leads into the next lesson. It's, it's a lot of fun and it's, it's, for me personally, I used to teach economics, so it allows me to keep my feet, my foot in that door. But it also kind of keeps me on my toes of what he's going to bring up, so what, what, what is next. We do this with a number of students, but I thought this was a good example of how to, how we do this. Another way that we use project-based learning is to come up with an area that they're interested in and come up with a project rather than try to solve a problem. Up here, this is one of the examples, and I have two examples for this. This is Abriana. Abriana is another student who, she's been up here a lot, many times before. You've seen her if you come to the meetings. She wasn't able to take guitar in her regular, um, course load. So, what we've done this year through gifted is she comes up on Fridays, sixth period, and she alternates learning guitar with a lot of help from Mrs. Coney. And one Friday is guitar, the next one is bass. And she is coming up and learning and getting better. She's very good already. She keeps getting better with these two. The idea is at the end, she's going to come up with a song, and this is what we're going to start working on in March. And she's going to come up with a song that she'll learn the guitar, the rhythm guitar part, the lead guitar part, the bass part. And then we are going to multi-track that, so she'll be able to record all of that. So, that's, that's one example. There's another example, and I don't have a slide because it really doesn't lend itself to a slide. We have two students right now who are into engineering and into particularly electric, electrical engineering. And we're coming up with a project where they are creating a system of switches. Now, it's a little more complicated than it sounds, or maybe it does sound complicated. But before we can get in, finish this project, what we had to do was, first, we had to go and learn how to read the schematics. So, I got to learn some new things with that. And second, before they're actually able to implement this, they had to go into the tech ed department and learn how to solder everything together. So, we're in the process of learn, I'm not, they're in the process of learning to solder right now. So, hopefully after we get the soldering aspect done and we're good enough to move forward, we'll be able to complete this project this year. That's one of the things, some of these projects may take more than one year. Luckily, we have these kids for four years, but it's an ongoing. And I, I tell you, the one thing is, when you're starting to get involved in these pro- projects like this, the learning, the hands-on learning and being do- doing something, it isn't just like textbook-driven or whatever, but actually hands-on and learning a number of different skills. You really see, once, once you get started, you really start to buy into it because you're looking forward to the next step. And it's really need to be able to start to create things on your own. Some of our projects are outside of the academic realm. Um, in the gifted support, we have a number of students who take four or five AP CHS classes. Um, they're stretched thin academically. And their course loads and everything don't really lend themselves, they don't want to do another academic-type project because they're pretty challenged. Some of them are learning for, to learn things such as the quilting or whatever and dealing with other, I, I know nothing about quilting, by the way. But some of our teachers are helping with, with this and it's teaching hobbies or something that we, they don't fit into their schedule, but it's still a nice way to learn. Another thing that we've done this year is we've gone to various events and competitions. And, and we use these events and competitions as a springboard for learning. In this case right here, this was a genetics conference. We have about five or six students who are interested in genetics and biomedical engineering. We were fortunate enough, this year, we went to a genetics conference with these students. And following the conference, the students came back and met with us and had some questions and they talked about what they learned. Now, as you know, we can't, as gifted support teachers, I was social studies, economics, I, I'm not an expert in everything. None of us are. But through this, we had two students in particular who came up, up with ideas, who were really interested in some of the things that were presented at the genetics conference and decided and worked with our biology department in, in creating projects that expanded upon what they've learned. So, in addition to what they were doing in biology, they were doing outside work based upon what they, questions and things that they had learned at the genetics conference, which I thought was really, really something special this year. Okay, we've also taken apart, taken part in a number of competitions this year, like we do Calcio solve, hometown IQ, um, other things. The high achievers and gate students do take part in the competitions. And I think one of the things, one of the real takeaways here is with everyday classes, you're, you're very focused on your performance, but a lot of this, especially with the calcio solve, this is having to use what you know, but also work as a team. And I think building that teamwork and the ability to work with others is just as important as being able to learn material. So, whenever we look at some of these competitions, it's, it's also skill-based and learning to deal with other people. We recently, and when I say recently, I mean Tuesday. We took part in a connects competition at North Allegheny. And this was another example of a competition. This is a little different than the calcio solve. Rather than using the acad- being an academic challenge, this is a, this was a challenge which students were giving challenges and they had to use prior knowledge and once again, work as a team to, uh, solve a series of five problems. This was more hands-on. And the, the thing that I liked about this is this really brought, I think, more than anything that I've seen this year, this really brought out the ability for students to work together and think outside of the box and try to come up and use different things that they've learned to come up with, uh, solutions. We were really proud, one of our teams, it was tenth graders with one ninth grader finished first. This was dealing with teams from Moon, North Hills, Avonworth, North Gate, I'm not sure who else. But one of our teams finished first and our second team, which was all ninth graders, finished second. So, we were really, really proud of that. Now, we're trying to tie this in and trying to develop an interest, these were all people that are interested in engineering. So, we were trying to give that hands-on engineering as, as a way to kind of move forward here. We're also participating in the Shakespeare monologues. Once again, this is just another kind of activity that we're doing that allows for students to engage in a project. This particular one improves the speaking, acting, public performance. They're working with a coach, he's a college professor, um, with the, and they're working with the Pittsburgh Public Theater. We're just in the process of, we're right in the middle of that, uh, right now. Perhaps the newest thing that we've implemented in gate, we're, we're doing a newsletter this year. And this serves as a, a number of different capacities. The newsletter is done by the students, uh, covers a variety of topics. Some of the things that we do is we spotlight students' successes and talk about where people have been, uh, accepted to college, whatnot, um, various accomplishments, and believe me, there's a lot of them. Our students are fantastic. It also serves as a reminder, this is a way where, as I used to send out a week, or a monthly newsletter to gate students rather than doing it through paper, now it's all, it's all up here online. Parents can log in, we can log in, students can log in. But the aspect that I'm most pleased about it is a lot of the students that we have, we do have people who want to do the journalism. And what we've done is through this project is we've had the underclassmen who haven't necessarily had a chance to explore journalism, being over, with the oversight of some of our older students who have gone through journalism, interview various students. And we're trying to get this cooperation between nine, from nine through twelve. So, as these students, we have the younger students interview older students about not only their academic successes, but also what they've done outside. Because a number of our sports, or a number of our people, like we, like Dave Lucas up there, Lucas up there. He, um, he's a gate student, he was starting center on the football team. A number of our students are involved in a number of activities. And by, during the interviews, one of the things that we make sure that is brought up and brought into the articles is not only what makes you successful as a student, but how do you balance your time? And what advice would you give? And how do you go about being successful both in the classroom and outside of the classroom? It gives the students who are interviewing a chance to, to interview, learn, and write about this. And it gives everybody else a chance to read about some tips that might help. If scheduling's coming up next week in the high school, I think this is big because sometimes students coming up wonder if they are able to actually take a challenging course load and be involved in extracurricular activities. And these guys up here, um, illustrate that it's definitely possible. Mr. Hand threw this slide up again, he always makes fun of me about this slide. In addition, we have some of the students, one of the neat things we've always done, we've had students, uh, come in and try to help with students taking connections in other hard classes and give them advice. This year, we have some students making videos and meeting with younger students. This is again, we're really trying to promote that, uh, cooperation between twelfth, tenth, eleventh, ninth, every, every grade across the board with tips with not just, um, classes, but with scheduling, study tips, and various things. We have a couple other projects that we're working on right now that we're trying to get off the ground. That includes trying to do some type of local government day. We've been working with various local governments, West Hugh and Ross. And also, we're trying to come up with a chess tournament right now because this year, we have a big emphasis on, a lot of kids who are really into chess, but they're, the students are the ones who are organizing and doing everything. And I think they're realizing there's more to organizing an event than just showing up, as we all know, and putting on an event. Finally, um, for our seniors, the last thing that we do, eh, for our seniors who are leaving is, a lot of them have been accepted into colleges and finding out this week about some, some more colleges, um, is... about some more colleges, is introducing strategies for post-high school life. One of the big projects we have that we do with our seniors, a culminating project, is reading a book and talking. It's more, it's The Forgotten Semester, and we talk about financial literacy, mortgages, loans, things like that. Have them all talk about that, bring in my mortgage so they can see how much we pay in interest, and we all know how fun that is. And try to give a very hands-on understanding of some of the things that they're going to be facing in the future. So, our goal is not just to provide the education within North Hills, but we are really trying to promote the education, making sure people are successful outside of school. And really, that's it. But the one thing I wanted to say before, Ellie and Hannah over there, I mean, these guys are a perfect example of people who are involved in everything. And I think if you saw their presentation today, or if you saw whenever Connor Lamb was here and they emceed, what better way to... You've seen how much they've grown and how... They gave the best presentation of the night so far. So, I mean, that's just an example of some of these things that the projects can actually help with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Next, we have a request for the board to approve accelerate education for the provision of the district online learning management system, which was discussed at our previous meeting. This is going to be used for our online academy as well as hybrid and blended learning. Course pricing is defined within Exhibit B of the attached Master Services and License Agreement. The superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve education item two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have nothing under athletics and activities this evening. Do we have any report for the Beatty Career Center? No? Okay. Then I will hand it over to Mrs. Spade for personnel.
Personnel items are discussed in executive session. The superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve personnel items one through four.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have a legislative report this evening?
We do, but do we want to do a community?
Oh, I'm sorry. My iPad was scrolled the wrong way. I apologize, Mr. Little. I will hand it over to you for community and intergovernmental relations.
Sure. So, the board will open nominations for interested members to seek candidacy for the vacancy positions on the AIU board. There's, following positions are available, two three-month positions and four three-year positions. A little bit about the AIU board, members are responsible for all 42 school districts as well as non-public schools and charter schools in Allegheny County. So, I'd go ahead and make a motion that we accept nominations for people seeking to serve on the board?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Little.
We have to vote on his motion.
I apologize.
All in favor of making nominations for the AIU board?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, would anybody like to make any nominations?
Now, I would like to make that nomination for Phil Little. I apologize for doing it out of turn.
No problem. I'll second that. Are there any other nominations? Okay, I will close the nomination. So, we have a motion on the table to appoint Phil Little, the... To, hmm, what's the motion for?
To seek candidacy.
To seek candidacy for the vacant position on the AIU board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Little.
Thank you.
Ms. Cosera, how do you have a legislative report?
I do. Tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit about the PSBA legislative priority issues for the 2019-2020 session. The, as I mentioned, we've mentioned a couple of times now, some of us attended the PSBA conference last October in Hershey. And Mrs. Mathis and I were two of the three candidates on voting on the PSBA platform. Now, that means that we, the PSBA has sort of a set platform, and they make modifications to it, and they prioritize certain things that they're going to lobby our state legislature to pass that will benefit public schools. And we were members of the body that voted on the changes that were going to be made. So, the three things that the PSBA is prioritizing for lobbying this year is providing for safe and secure schools, enact meaningful charter school reforms, and addressing Pennsylvania's pension funding crisis. For, with respect to the safe schools, PSBA believes that the state must prioritize the protection of students and school employees from acts of violence by providing schools with continued and long-term funding, assistance, and flexible options that best meet the needs of their communities to provide safe and secure school environments. We've talked a lot as a board about enacting meaningful charter school reforms and some of the funding issues associated with charter schools that have affected public school budgets. And similarly, the pension funding crisis. Between, just to give you a little bit of background, between 2002 and 2017 fiscal years, total employer pension costs have increased more than 3,500%. As a result, school districts have made reductions to programs, services, and staffing levels to mitigate the impact on taxpayers. Despite these efforts, school districts have been forced to raise property taxes significantly to meet their mandatory pension obligations. PSBA believes that the continued underfunding of public school employee pensions, notably, the public school employee retirement system is undermining the solvency of school districts and the Commonwealth as well as leading the underfunding of agencies that both directly and indirectly impact the ability of school districts to provide quality education. So, those are just some of the things that our school board organization is lobbying for. If you want to read the whole platform, it is available. If you just Google "PSBA legislative priority issues", you can get to a website where you can find out, you know, a little more detail about these and about some of the other things that the PSBA is lobbying for. It's pretty interesting to kind of get into it and see what sorts of things that our, you know, state as a whole is looking to improve upon to help public schools. And I also wanted to mention in connection with this, I'm hoping to attend the advocacy day in Harrisburg, the PSBA advocacy day, which is in March. And I will come back with some, hopefully, interesting information. I haven't attended that event before, so I'm curious to see how it goes.
Thank you very much. Next, we have policy with Ms. Cosera.
I only have one item tonight. It's the second reading of Policy 243, homeless students. The motion is that the board approve the revisions to Policy 243 per the attached, which we discussed in some detail last week. These were, these changes were relatively minor and include some changes to various terms in the policy, addition of terms and removal of awaiting foster care and some updated definitions. The superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve policy item one.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Knowlisch is not feeling well this evening, so she is not present. I'll handle the finance report. We have the general fund bills, capital fund project, capital project fund bills, food service fund bills, budget transfers. All of those are attached to the agenda. And payroll in the amount of $3,080,568. $3,080,568.45. I wish I hadn't attempted that. That being said, the superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve finance items one through five.
Second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looks like we don't have anything under support services, Ms. Phil Pot. Okay. Do we have anybody who would like to make public comments on non-agenda items this evening? Okay, I would like to announce that our next meeting is actually going to be on a Wednesday, which is unusual for the board, and this is due to the celebration of learning at the elementary schools, which is on a Thursday. So, the next public meeting for the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, February 5th, 2020, in the North Hills Middle School LGI Room at 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask the board members to stay after this meeting for a brief executive session to discuss personnel and legal items. And with that being said, I adjourn the meeting.